I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic of which we stand, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call.
Honorable Mayor Ron Schaver.
Here.
Councilmember Brian Erdialis.
Oh, here.
Doug Sasso.
Here.
Clint Anderson.
Here.
Lynn Deal.
Here.
Kevin Lindell.
Here in person.
Okay, first item on our agenda is public comment and audience participation. We've moved this from the back of the agenda to the front. So this is for anybody that wants to address council for anything that is not on our current agenda this evening. This first item is public participation and up audience comments. It's for things that are not on any of the agenda items for tonight's council meeting. It's for anything the community wants to bring forward or talk about. So it's just an opportunity at this time to do so. Seeing none, we'll move to the next item. Next is the approval of the minutes from our September 15, 2020 city council regular meeting. Mr. Brennan.
Thank you, Your Honor. The minutes, draft minutes of the September 15 meeting were provided in your council meeting packets and are presented for your approval by resolution.
Has everybody had an opportunity to read or review the minutes as presented in your packet? If so, I'd entertain a resolution for approval.
Your Honor, I offer a resolution of the minutes of the September 15 meeting, city council regular meeting.
I have a motion for resolution by Lynn Deal, a second by Brian Erdialis. Vote by roll call.
That resolution carries on a unanimous vote of six to zero with one vacancy on the council.
You're in the middle. Next is recog- recognition of business of the month for October. Sarah Crossway.
Hi, good evening. So before I announce the name for business of the month, I want to give a quick sort of history on them. This is a family-owned business that's been here in our community for over 10 years. Throughout the years, they've been able to expand the products that they offer, and they're just such a huge asset that we have here in our business community, and we're really lucky that they call Fort Morgan home. With that, I'd like to introduce the owner, Jose Del Campo, and Martha Fabiana up here to the stage to accept business of the month for Las Americas. Doctoria, doctoria, and panaderia.
Next is reading of a proclamation declaring October as Domestic Violence Awareness Month. Whereas domestic violence affects every person in Fort Morgan, Colorado either as a victim, survivor, or survivor of domestic violence, or as a family member, significant other, friend, neighbor, or coworker. And whereas recognition of October as Domestic Violence Awareness Month exemplifies a commitment to service, to servicing domestic violence survivors by acknowledging, invigorating, and rededicating ourselves to the goal of eliminating domestic violence. And whereas Share Inc. is working to provide quality services and assistance to domestic violence survivors responding to emergency calls and criminal justice proceedings. And whereas domestic violence programs like Share Inc. and other professionals and advocates of nonviolence have joined together to support each other in their work and to provide our citizens with safe, safety and services. And whereas during the month of October, Share Inc. will be intensifying efforts to promote public understanding of family violence and increase in sensitivity to fam- to victims of family violence, emphasizing the need of citizen involvement in efforts to reduce family violence through public education and changing public attitudes. Now therefore, I Ron Schaver, Mayor of City of Fort Morgan, Colorado, do hereby designate October 2020 as Domestic Violence Awareness Month in the City of Fort Morgan and urge the appropriate recognition thereof.
There you go, and you may say a few words of Jewish.
So I just thought I'd take a quick opportunity.
Step up to the mic so everybody.
I just wanted to take a quick opportunity to introduce our staff and our board of directors and our volunteers. We have two of our full-time staff here. Alicia Fiero has been with Share for 15 years. She's our outreach director and bilingual advocate in Spanish and English. Ada Marquez is our child youth program director, and she's been there almost a year, and she is also bilingual in English and Spanish. We have a part-time advocate in Yuma, Sylvia Castillo. She's also bilingual in English and Spanish. We have a couple of our board members that came tonight, and I'm very pleased about that. Kate McBride is our board chair, and Jen McBride is a board member also. We have other board members. Austin Hinaos is our treasurer. Aaron Apple is our secretary. Oneda Petrino, Leslie Linton, and Darren Segal are all on our board of directors. Thank you so much to the city council for recognizing October as Domestic Violence Awareness Month. We really appreciate it.
Thanks for all you do for domestic violence awareness.
Thank you.
The next item on our agenda is a public hearing as the local liquor licensing authorities. This is a public hearing before the city council of the City of Fort Morgan acting as a liquor licensing authority for the city to determine whether the application for fermented malt beverage license off premises by Stinkers Store Company Incorporated is the applicant should be granted or denied. This hearing will be conducted pursuant to the laws of the state of Colorado and the ordinances and procedures of the City of Fort Morgan. The purpose of this hearing is to receive information, data, and testimony by any interested parties in order to enable the city to make findings and reach conclusions requiring, required to be made by state law as to whether or not the application should be approved or denied. One of the principal questions the council will be concerned with throughout this hearing relates to the responsible requirements of the neighborhood for the outlets applied for and the desires of the inhabitants of that neighborhood with respect to the outlet. Those persons who will be heard during this hearing are parties of interest who are defined by state law as being the applicant, residents of the neighborhood, or owners or managers of businesses located in the neighborhood. In the order of this hearing will be as follows. At the conclusion of my opening state comments, staff will report on the public notice of the hearing, posting of the property, status of fingerprint reports, presentation of the application, review of the petition. The application, the applicant will present their case, meaning they will present testimony, exhibits, petitions, and other material relevant, relevant to the application. Interested parties may then testify for or against the proposed application, after which the applicant will have the opportunity for rebuttal. At the conclusion of all testimony, the council will make its decision to approve or deny the application. All testimony will be given under oath given by the city clerk. Any exhibits presented during this hearing will be submitted to the city clerk to become part of the record. The city clerk's official files are hereby admitted into the record of this hearing. The council previously set the boundaries of the neighborhood for the license as the entire city of Fort Morgan. Does anyone present object to the boundaries of the neighborhood? If not, we'll proceed to the public hearing. Legal notice. Mr. Brennan.
Yes, Your Honor, a legal notice of this public hearing was published in the Fort Morgan Times on September 4, and a notice of the application for the license and the public hearing was posted on the property on, for at least 10 days prior to this hearing.
Presentation of the application. Mr. Brennan.
Thank you, Your Honor. So this is a new application for the new Stinker Gas Station and Convenience Store. Fermented malt beverage is what used to be called beer, and so it off premises means it's for consumption off the premises. So it's just basically for packaged beer. The application was received on August 1 and reviewed by my office, the city attorney, and the police department, and deemed to be complete. The council accepted it on September 1 and set this public hearing for October 6. We subsequently published notice of this hearing in the newspaper and on the property, and affidavits of those postings are included in your packet. Do we have anybody from Stinker representing Stinker Stores here? Okay, good. Okay, so we do have the applicant here. As the mayor said in his opening statement, the applicant has the burden at this hearing of establishing the reasonable requirements of the neighborhood for the license applied for and the desires of the adult inhabitants of the neighborhood for the establishment proposed. It has become the easiest way to establish those needs and desires by circulating petitions. And in this case, Stinker Stores is a fairly large company. They used a petitioning company that came to town and circulated petitions in residential and business areas, primarily around the location of the store, even though the, the entire city limits is considered the neighborhood for these purposes. They submitted a total of 59 signatures. One had to be ruled invalid because the signer didn't list their age, and another because the signer lived outside the city. There is not any minimum number of signatures required. We just, you know, encourage them to get a significant number, and it's a lot easier to get petition signatures than try and get a bunch of people to come to this meeting and vouch for their support for the license. On the police department, we had, my office has not received any written or verbal comments for or against the issuance of the license. The police department posted notice of the property of the hearing on the property, conducted a fingerprint and background check with no findings. Stinker Stores actually is a big enough outfit that they have a master file on, file with the state liquor enforcement division, so there were no findings, and they're all clear on that. And once the license presumably is approved, then the police department would conduct a final inspection of the license premises. So staff's recommendation is that the local licensing authority weigh the evidence presented at the hearing and make an objective decision on this application for a new fermented malt beverage license off premises for Stinker Stores CO Incorporated located at 601 Main Street.
Okay, any comments by the applicant? Were there any public comments oral or written submitted prior to this, Mr. Brennan?
No, Your Honor.
Comments or questions by city council? I would entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
So move.
Second.
I have a motion by Doug Sasso, a second by Clint Anderson. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Pose same sign. Motion carries. Council action. Ms. Williams.
Yes, we recommend that city council acting as the local licensing authority weigh all the evidence at the hearing and make an objective decision whether you approve or deny this application for a new fermented malt beverage license off premises.
I would entertain.
Your Honor, I offer a resolution to approve the application for the new fermented malt beverage license for off premises at Stinker Store located at 601 Main Street.
Have a resolution by Doug Sasso, a second by Lynn Deal. Vote by roll call.
That resolution carries unanimously.
Excellent. Good luck in your business.
My name is Jerry Nichols. I'm the general manager of Stinker Stores Colorado. Stinker Stores is, we're, Mr. Brennan said we're a big company. We're not that big. We have about 115 locations in three states, Idaho, Wyoming, and Colorado. We were fortunate enough to buy a chain in Colorado in 2017, and fortunate enough to have a location here. And I just wanted to say, approved or not approved, we're very proud to be in Fort Morgan. We're very proud to reinvest in Fort Morgan, and we look very much forward to being a productive part of the community moving forward. So, thank you, guys.
Welcome to Fort Morgan and did a nice job on that corner.
Yeah, was a, was a nice addition to Fort Morgan, a nice store.
Okay, next item on our agenda is a public hearing to consider an application for a special use permit to operate an auto salvage business in a B2 zoning district near 207 South Sherman Street. This is a public hearing. Please keep your comments to the issue before the council. Each speaker is asked to limit their comments to three minutes unless a speaker represents a group of citizens, in which event additional time may be allocated. Please respect these limitations. I reserve the right to limit public comment that is inappropriate under these guidelines or otherwise improper. I also reserve the right to limit testimony or questioning that is repetitive, cumulative, argumentative, or not pertinent to the issues, and to set a limit on the duration of testimony if I determine necessary in light of the number of people who have signed up to testify. First is the issue of legal notice. Mr. Brennan, was this hearing properly noticed?
Yes, Your Honor, a legal notice of this public hearing appeared in the Fort Morgan Times on September 16.
Next is the presentation of the application. Mr. Nation.
Good evening, everyone. Okay, so what we have tonight, we have certain, just kind of in a nutshell, we have, we have certain zoning districts that things are just allowed in, that you can just come in and make sure your building codes are being met, and you can place a business there or a house there, you know, whatever's allowed underneath that specific zone. And then we have some things that fall into a special category that somebody felt that when the code was put together that it might be appropriate to see this type of facility go into a zone, but not without getting permission first. And so that's what we're kind of looking at tonight, is that it was felt that an auto salvage business may fit into a B2 zone, but it really should come in front of the planning commission and in front of the council to make that determination. And, because there's generally a compatibility issue, and we talk about that type of thing. And so, so what we're looking at, and you have in your packet, is the piece of ground that's immediately behind the gas station that's on South Sherman Street. The owner of that gas station has divided off that little piece that's in an L behind it, and the two gentlemen that are here tonight are the, are the gentlemen that are looking at opening up in a, this auto salvage business there. Just for your information, and I did the same explaining to the planning commission, the two gentlemen that were in here were unaware that this needed a special use permit. They did start to locate their business on the property without knowing that this was required. Once it was brought to our attention that it was happening, we worked with notifying them, and then they came in and met with us and proceeded to stop bringing merchandise to the property. They stopped bringing in the cars and things like that. They kind of cleaned up what they had there, and then they've immediately got the application filled out and started moving forward with the special use process. And so, so yes, there are vehicles over there. Yes, they did start to make that step, but it was after we identified that they needed to come in. So, so, yes, we're looking at the business of, the name of Forever Auto Salvage falling into a B2 zone. This is kind of a seam, as I was describing to planning commission in our zones. They're obviously in a B2, but we do have some residential zones that fall right up against this. And that's where, when you start looking at the criteria that goes into making the decision on this, we start to weigh. In the land use code, when we look at a special use permit, there's six criteria that have to be examined on the approval of this. They're outlined in my memo. We'll just hit them real quickly. Number one is the proposed special use is compatible with the adjacent uses in adjacent zone districts. Number two is the special use meets all existing criteria for minimum lot area setbacks, building heights, parking and signs. Three is the special use will not change the predominant character of the neighborhood. Four is the special use will not overburn the capacities of the streets, utilities, parks, schools, and facilities. Five is that the proposed use conforms with the comprehensive plan. Six, that there's, there's a history of compliance by the applicant and or property owner with requirements of this chapter. With the discussions with the planning commission, we kind of settled on the fact that two, four, five, and six were not of issue in this discussion, that they were okay with those parts of the code. The analysis that the planning commission spent the most time on is one and three. That has to do with, the first one is the compatibility with the neighborhood. We did have, even though we never received any written comments ahead of the planning commission or this, we did have neighbors come in and discuss how they felt that this could change the neighborhood if it happens. I see several of those people here tonight, so I'm sure they'll reiterate, reiterate their points that they brought up at planning commission. There was some fear about what it does to the, the property values of the people that owns the houses across the street. And then number three is just the predominant character of the neighborhood. And so that was the other issue that was brought up, where obviously if you're living in a house, you feel like it's more of a, you know, a house in a neighborhood, and, and if you're on the B2 side, you feel like it's a business district. And so, so that's where the planning commission struggled. The planning commission met last Monday. We met for just right out an hour. We had a quorum, but we did not have a full board there for that. I could not get planning commission to render an opinion or make a motion on this item. So there is not a recommendation one way or another from the planning commission with the packet, because they chose not to act on it. So, with that, we've done everything else. All the notifications were done that we had to do with this. All the original paperwork that was submitted to the planning commission is in my packet. You have my memo. We do ask that if you decide to go ahead and accept this use, there are three things that we would like to see conditioned with the special use approval. That's, the first one in my memo is that this be personal to the business and is not allowed to be inherited, that the business owner still meet with the building department and the fire marshal. The building that it's on there is just a shell of a building, and it's never been looked at by the building department for, if there are any other issues that might just pop up from its use, since we want to make sure that we go through it and make sure there's nothing in it that we need to know about. And then the last one is, is that same shell of a building has never been signed an address, and we would look to assign it an address of Commerce Avenue. That's the street that the building predominantly faces, and so that's where the, the address would be assigned. So those are the three things that we would ask and be conditioned on it if you guys choose to approve this. At this point, I would be happy to answer any questions for you. I know the applicants are here and have some, I think some pictures and stuff that they want to show you, but what more can I do for you?
A couple of years ago, when I was on planning and zoning, they wanted to put multi-unit, like apartments in there. Was it a B2 then?
Yes.
As well? Okay.
Does anybody have any questions for Mr. Nation?
I do, on who owns that corner property, but I don't know if it's here or later.
Speak into your mic.
Okay. I didn't know where I fit. Who owns the little square of property that's on the corner of Commerce and South Sherman?
That's the gas station.
Okay.
And he owns the property that we're talking about, but he signed all the necessary paperwork to make these gentlemen the representative on the request. And so, and that's that Nabeen Prash, Prash, something.
Okay.
Yeah. So, but he, he did sign, and it was done in front of a notary and everything that made these two gentlemen able to come in and file the application and be the spokesman for this request.
Okay, but, but he owns the property?
Yeah.
That we're speaking about?
Yeah.
So technically, salvage yards don't fall, what does salvage yards even fall under for zoning in Fort Morgan? They don't fall under B2?
They can be done in B2 with special use, or they can be done in industrial.
Industrial, okay.
So, yeah.
Well, one good thing, got rid of the pallets anyway, huh?
There are still, and I was going to bring that up too. There was a mention of the pallets at the planning commission, and there are still pallets piled on a piece of property, but not the property that we're talking about today.
All right.
Yeah, they got shifted to the west.
Any other questions for Mr. Nation?
Is there any auto salvage in the city currently? Isn't there one over near?
It's on Park. Is that, that's not sure.
Well...
I don't know what that would be.
That's pick of the litter.
Yeah, and that's being...
A recycle yard.
Yeah, it's a recycle yard, but it's just being cleaned up under, under court order, basically.
Yeah.
I don't think it's actually a functioning business anymore.
Okay.
So, but yeah, I think this might be the only one in the city limits that I can think of.
There was one south of Main, down toward Star Athletic or that. It was a small one.
But outside the city limits.
Bristol owned that.
Yeah.
And then there's one out on 34, west, west side. But I don't know of one in the city limits, so.
Okay, I'll stay close.
Thanks, Brent. Okay, comments by the applicant. If anybody wants to address the council?
Can you sign in on the sheet there?
Hello, my name is Antonio Beltran. I am the co-owner, founder of Forever Auto Salvage. I know that when you think of salvage yard, you might imagine a big, noisy, messy, and ugly establishment, but, you know, I brought something that would provide new facts that will disprove that. A little background about myself, I have lived here for 22 years. I'm 25 now. I graduated high school here. I went to MCC for automotive for, for a year, completed one year while I was in high school. Since then, I've worked several maintenance jobs where I picked up safety education, as well as like OSHA, understand OSHA rules, and as well as hot work procedures, confined space training, and other training that really don't pertain here. But one of the arguments they, they had was, of course, the property value. So, you know, obviously, property value increase decreases mostly on the actions of the owner. But, you know, I understand that, you know, bringing that type of business to the area could possibly decrease property values. I researched and found on Forbes.com that, you know, like ways to increase property values in a neighborhood together is to work with your neighbors, and, you know, the neighbors seem like they're very clean, and, you know, they take care of their yards, and we noticed that, and we also want to fit in and do the same thing if we are allowed to, to operate there. You know, there's some empty, empty lots around, so tending to those empty lots could help out, increase property values. We can also help with that, as well as ourselves, try to put landscaping, like there's a little area up front. I was going to get into that more later on. Landscaping, improving schools that also maybe in the future we could possibly help out with. Things that I found also in my research that increase property values in the neighborhoods are walkability, you know, being able to walk around, get to places, and, you know, that area already is a pretty, it's pretty close to other businesses. So, when people are looking to buy houses, you know, they take that into consideration. Safety, you know, we take safety very serious, willing to put any kind of caution signs along fences, just whatever, whatever it takes. And diversity, diversity increases property value. So, I feel like our business might bring a lot of diversity to different people, customers, and attractions. And also interactions with your community, right? So, I mean, we're willing to work with our community and, you know, take care of anything that needs to be done or asked of us. Obviously, also good schools in the area increase property values, which there are schools in the area. Areas, research also showed that areas with public transportation available increases property value. So, there's, of course, a train station. There is County Express business right on Commerce as well. So, those are ways that, you know, the area already has a pretty, maintains its property values. And also, jobs, jobs create, increase property value, and we can also create some jobs in the future. We plan to invest in our own, in the own property that we have to increase the property value as well, such as landscaping, maybe a sitting area, staying clean, you know, that's real, a big priority to us because that brings business to our business, as obviously, you know, we just want to fit in with, with the neighborhood. And upgrading our building if needed, we, we plan on, you know, making it look good. If we need to, you know, add cement to the front for parking, you know, anything, we, that's our plan. And, okay, so another complaint was noise. So, we currently don't produce a lot of noise just because of the fact that we use more battery-powered tools versus air compressed tools. So, you know, that reduces noise. Removing cars, we don't plan to crush cars there. We don't plan to really do anything crazy. We're just buying some cars, taking what we need out of it, and then basically the whole car goes to the recycling. Like, and we have methods to get them out. We have trailers, car haulers, and all that to maintain, maintain that. And we don't, obviously, we're not going to run heavy equipment that's going to make noise, like diesel motors, or, you know, anything powered with engines. And we're also willing to work with our neighbors on any issues that come out, like I said before. One thing that I found that does affect property values is the congestion and traffic. So far, it's just going to be two employees, and on our, on the property, there's enough parking for us, for some customers, and inside as well. We know we have all the space that we need. And our operations aren't really going to be so big that we're going to be attracting several people. One thing I'd like to point out is that traffic already exists in the area due to other businesses, Cargill for one, you know, in that corner, it's a heavy, heavy traffic area. But that already exists. Also, several businesses, as soon as you cross any of those railroad tracks, you see nothing but industrial businesses, and I feel like we could fit in really well. And I guess another way to increase property values is the impact of culture. It creates a different environment. Diversity, like stated before, might attract home buyers when in the area, just because of the fact that we have people coming from other cities and states, in some cases, coming to buy stuff from us. It creates business for other businesses as well, because somebody comes down from another city or state, they might stop and get gas, they might stop and eat food, they might stop and get a hotel. So, it's creating business for everyone. One more argument they had against it was fire hazards. Tires were mentioned being flammable. In my research, I found that they are made of flammable material, but it's not common for them to catch fire. And I tried getting some statistics on, like, how many fires there've been in, in the US for tires. Couldn't find anything. Narrowed it down to the state. I couldn't really find anything. So, all I found was just more wildfires, more house fires, you're more probable of getting, you know, fires happening that way. Even with those tires as well, we have small quantities. We're not going to have a lot of tires, and we're willing to store them in a different manner if needed to be. And also, in my research, five major factors that cause fires in industrial businesses are combustible dust, which we won't create much of, hot work. We'll be doing a minimum, a little bit of cutting and welding. But to reduce that, we do have saws that don't cause sparks, so whenever we could use them, we will use them. We don't have heavy equipment, electrical, fires are very minimum. What we do see fire happening from gas, aerosols, and oils. And a way to prevent that is with flammable cabinets, like OSHA regulations, and draining all fluids before they go into the lot. So, one more argument they had against us was rodents, rodents and small animals. We're willing to keep up with, you know, get pest control, anything we have to do. Some tips we have, you know, that we could use is to destroy any environment, you know, that come, come about. Don't feed, obviously, any, any animals. We don't really eat food there, have food there, so there's not going to be any food left around. Trimming weeds, trees, and setting traps are ways of reducing all that. And just for the fact that they're cars, and there's oil smell or whatever, they just going to stay away. And also, we're starting our business, you know, we're willing to do anything we have to do with COVID-19 regulations, you know, require masks if needed. People come in, you know, a certain amount of people in the building, but we're willing to, to do whatever we have to do on that as well. For, as far as the environment, we're willing to put up privacy fences, staying clean, you know, biggest priority, like mentioned, getting our own dumpsters, recycling, recycling bins. And also, like mentioned before, all oils, fluids will be drained in the building and contained before going on to the actual dirt lot. And then we're just open, you know, we'll be open with the neighbors and willing to help out. And just a little bit about our business, we seek professional help for a good business plan. We have a really good business plan. We're, we're young, and we're like, one of the only younger generations pursuing this industry. A lot of people we know of are retiring, closing their shops. And, you know, we're, we're seeking that. We're hardworking, we're honest, and, you know, just willing to cooperate with any rules. And then I just would like to add that, you know, again, we're willing to work with the neighbors with any existing or future issues. And in, I guess in conclusion, we're not asking please, we're just asking for you to take facts into consideration, and, you know, think about it whenever you're making your choice. And that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Does anybody have any questions for Antonio?
I have a quick question. So, on your lot and everything like that, so you're bringing in cars, and you're kind of scavenging them, taking the parts out and everything, and then you haul the leftover tasses or whatever away, correct?
Yes, yes. So, the reason we are a salvage yard is because we own all of our merchandise right now, but mostly we're just going to focus on repairing cars. Anything that's, you know, like, too bad to fix, it's going to go out right away. I actually did forget, I have a whole bunch of pictures that I'd like to show you as well. So, this is our current, current lot, and this is the street view. As you could tell, you kind of have to have a real high profile to be able to see over that fence, and that's where, you know, the houses, our closest houses are to us. Here's a little bit more down the street. You know, we put up that, that black screening, and like I said, we're willing to change it if it's not, if it doesn't meet the requirements, or if, you know, if we could build a better fence that'll increase property values. See, this is something I just made up myself, and, you know, just, it's just something that we could possibly do, you know, privacy fence, landscaping, like mentioned. You know, that's the area right in front of the street. I mean, when people are driving by, I would assume it would look way better. And here's one, like, with the front view with the better privacy fence. This one without the shrubs, the trees, or just grass. And these are, like I said, mentioned before, when you do cross any of those railroad state, tracks, everything in the area is just business, you know. We fit in, like, that's all these other streets, like the next street over. There is, there was a few auto, there's Medrano's right on the corner, you know, right by us. This is the church parking lot, and, you know, it was mentioned that there was a church there, but to us, as of the time being there, we haven't seen much movement or activity going on there. I mean, I think the parking lot will kind of speak for itself, you know, the empty weeds. This is behind us on the side. So, all these circle drive houses are at least got to be 50 to 80 feet away from us, possibly more. And this is just something I like to show you guys, that these are old phone booths that are still there to this day, and, you know, like, the property, there's nothing has been done with it in a long time. And, you know, if given the opportunity, we could turn it around. And, yeah, that's, that's it.
Okay, good. Other question I had with it is, how many vehicles would be outside on the property, would you say, around at one time as far as accumulation?
Well, when we start, it's probably going to be when we have the most, just because of the deal we made when we bought all our inventory. We have about 40 to 50 cars, and we already got rid of some, so I don't have an exact count. We might have gotten rid of like, maybe eight to 10 cars already. And there's already a bunch of cars that are ready to be thrown away. So, I mean, given the permission, I mean, we just get on it, you know. There, after that, I don't see much cars being there more than like 10 to 15. But after that, after we get rid of all that our inventory, it's going to be cars that we're repairing. It's not going to be cars that are crashed and, you know, broken windshields and stuff like that. So, it's going to be a lot cleaner as we get more into the future.
Thank you.
I have a question. Are you, do you, are you renting the property?
Yes. And, but, we would like, if, if there's a possibility to buy as well, buy the property, seek a business loan and buy the property.
So, I believe in the paperwork that you turned in, that can hold, that lot can hold up to 100 vehicles, right? Is that what you said?
I think we might have overestimated there for 100, but yeah, I mean, it's still pretty close, like 80 to 70, but, I mean, we're probably never going to fill that with cars. I mean, we just don't want to either, you know.
And then that fence you're showing with the black paper, that's currently, that's how it looks right now, right?
That's current, yes, that's current.
How tall is that fence, like roughly?
Six feet, yes.
So, you're never going to be stacking cars on top of each other?
No.
So, it's seen over there, right?
No, no, there's, it's like, that's what I, I wanted you guys to understand, is that by definition, we have to be a salvage yard, but we're not going to even operate like anything you would imagine, like car stack, machines crushing the cars or anything, so.
And then, anytime anything's going in and out of your facility, it's going to be coming off of Commerce, not off of Sherman, correct?
Yes, yes. The main gate is actually facing Commerce, so, you know, all that, all that movement's going to be coming in and out of Commerce, so not much should be on Sherman.
Okay.
So you purchased your initial inventory, you said it was like 80 Honda cars, or?
Yes, yes.
That sort of stuff?
But we have, we have thinned out most, some of them and got rid of, or...
So, are you relocating them from Denver to here?
We were, but I, I actually got a, a small property where I, you know, put the rest of them where, when we were told that we couldn't operate there, that it's in another city, you know, so. But that's where everything else is at.
You talked about removing... You talk about removing all the fluids and that prior to pulling them out on the lot, what are your, what do you do with the containment or the fluids that you pull out? Used oil, tranny fluid?
Used oil, we could, we plan to get containment for our used oil, and, you know, seek any way of recycling it, and, you know, we could get information, because I know AutoZone takes it. So, I mean, we're not going to produce much, so what we can, we could get rid of it there or other resources as well.
My question's more for Brent, I guess, is there sewer, water, and all of that on this lot that they're leasing? Do you guys have a bathroom in that shop, or?
We have no, we don't have a bathroom right now.
We don't have a bathroom. The gas station, the owner is actually providing that for us, he's providing light, the restroom and the water. So, but I just wanted to add on that comment of, we're renting the property, we would like to purchase the property once we were given permission. We had talked a little bit with the owner themselves, it was a possibility after, you know, this is a discussion will take place after the, you know, the approval, or whether we're not approved, but that was something that we wanted to add, we wanted to upgrade the building itself so we can have our own personal restroom, our own personal utilities, that's, you know, water, electric, and, you know, trash. Just due to the inconvenience of going next door all the time, I think it'd be better just, you know, for us to have it in our, an actual, in the building itself.
I guess going along with the mayor's question, is there something the city does? I know we don't have a salvage yard in the city limits, but do we regulate that to make sure that things are being done correctly? Or we're just taking their word that things are being disposed of correctly?
Well, I'm not aware of any requirements that we have to, you know, make sure that that's occurring, I'm sure there is something, but the city specifically, I mean, certainly they can't pour it down the storm drain or something of that nature, and we do the best we can to ensure that's occurring. But outside of that, whether they take those containment facilities offsite and dispose of them somewhere or some other means, we certainly wouldn't have any way to regulate that at all. But certainly the things that we can control, we would, but, you know, we're not out there policing those types of things at any of our facilities, whether it be AutoZone or any of the other auto body type shops or repair shops that are in town.
Okay.
What's your hours?
Hours of operation?
Yeah.
Eight in the morning to eight in the afternoon?
Okay. So you're not out there midnight or?
No.
So this property, if it's given its own address, it will need a sewer and water tap in order to put restroom and water to that, correct?
We understand that, and that's something that we're looking, and we would like it ourselves, just for the fact of not disturbing the gas station.
That would also mean electric service and?
Correct, yes.
Do you currently have electricity to the shops in the photos?
Yes.
There is?
Second?
You do have electricity to the shops?
Yes, yes, yes.
In the photos? Okay. And that's separate than the gas station, right?
I think that's attached to it currently.
Okay.
I believe so.
Because it was one address originally, and then it got split up, is that correct?
Yes. Tires, I noticed you have, do you have tires out there, and are you stockpiling those? I know you said you had researched, you hadn't seen any fires, but I know that east of town or west of town here, there was a pretty good tire fire at one point in time. Problem with tires is they burn and smolder forever when they're, they burn. I know we have a fire marshal here.
On tires, we don't plan to accumulate those tires, those tires were just along with the deal. We got, everything that we bought is pretty much what we have, so we don't plan to accumulate tires, that's not something I want to specialize or anything. They can be a pain just to get rid of, to recycle, and it's something I don't, I don't plan to accumulate a big amount of, maybe save several sets of just good tires, but other than that, most of these things are going to go to the recycling.
Okay, the one picture looks like you're storing a lot of, got a lot of seats and storage for things you probably don't want to keep outside.
Yeah.
What would be your plans for something along that lines, if you're going to be doing repairs and make mechanic work in that shop?
Like as far as being like flammable or something, or?
Well, I mean, just being?
I mean, we could store them differently, you know, we're just kind of waiting on?
It's just a question.
Yeah, no, yeah, I kind of just didn't understand how you meant it, but, I mean, we could, we can move them, you know, any kind of organizing, we're going to, we were going to try to get more done when, knowing if we were approved or not.
Okay.
Just on that, I think, I think there's enough space in that shop where it gives us plenty of room to work in there, because what we, how we have them set up is just against the walls, so we have plenty of room within the middle to work, whether, it's not, you know, packed in there, we just, we wanted to keep the good stuff in there, obviously. They're in their boxes and whatnot, but I don't think we're, you know, we're crammed in there, I think we have plenty of room for two of us to work just fine in there.
Okay. Anybody else have any questions for the applicants? Thank you, gentlemen. Appreciate it. Next, we'll hear public comments, is there anyone who wishes to speak to this issue?
Yes.
Please sign in on that sheet next to there, if you would, please.
Mary Shaver and members of the city council. I am Bill Bruntz, my wife Ruth Ann, and I live at 218 South Sherman Street, here in Fort Morgan. We lived in this location approximately 53 years. Our home is located directly across South Sherman Street from the location which is requesting this special use permit to operate all salvage business. We want to voice our opposition to the city granting this permit. We strongly feel this business type does not belong in this predominantly residential neighborhood. I foresee a problem with the weeds, rodents, as well as other issues. If this is allowed to proceed, it is pretty much guaranteed our property values will decrease. I have some photos I have taken that show what already stored in the lot as of September 20th. As well, I have photos of the church and some of the surrounding residential area. I also have a petition with 23 names and addresses of residents in this area who are opposed to the auto salvage business operating in this area. I would like to show you the pictures, if I may, and the signatures. Like start with Everett or Lynn, whatever, on which?
They'll need to end up with Mr. Brennan to be the custodian of them, since this is a public hearing. You can continue if you wish, Mr. Bruntz.
Now, in closing, I would like to ask you, the members of the council, to consider what would you like if you would like at all salvage business with junk cars, old tires, and all the parts located in your neighborhood or directly across the street from you. This type of business does not belong in the predominantly residential area. Thank you.
Is there anybody else wish to speak?
My name is Karen Spiker.
Would you sign in?
And I have lived in my?
Would you sign the sheet there also?
I've lived in my house for 51 years. And I also have pictures for you. There is a storage shed, a small one, in one of these pictures. It's two feet from their fence, and it belongs to the church next door to them. He showed you pictures of every side of his property except the south side, which we live on. The 4, 5, and 600 block of Circle Drive is butted up against them. There's no alley in there, there's no street between us, there's a, what they call a utility easement way, which is kept padlocked, so you can't get up and down it. Nobody takes care of it. The city comes down twice a year, right straight through the middle. They did it two weeks ago, and I have pictures here you can look at that show you, it's worthless. But we don't want this in our neighborhood. We already have a rodent and snake problem from the pallet company, and this is going to draw more. You've drawn cars in there that are leaking oil and gas into the ground, which is going to go to our water, I don't know, but it's in the ground. It's just a complete disaster, and this is just going to add more to it. And our houses are going downhill, and all of the people out there feel like we're second class citizens because nobody cares what's going on out there. Want our city cleaned up and looking nice and pretty. When I moved here in 69, everybody took care of their lawns and had nice flowers and they're friendly people. And now our town has went downhill, and we want it to go back uphill. But I raised four boys out there, and I know, you tell your children, don't play in other people's yard, stay in your own yard. Little boys are very curious, and if you tell them you can't go in there, they're going to climb the fence to see what's there that they shouldn't see. If these pallets fall over on the children, or if they crawl into one of these cars, it's going to be disastrous. If there's a fire, it's going to move, and our houses have no chance. And if it moves to the east, there's that gas station with gasoline pumps that's going to explode. It's not something that belongs in our neighborhood, it should be outside the city limits. I have a petition here that I wrote up, I don't know if it's legal, binding, anything else, but I have 30 homeowners, well, I have 29 homeowners, just one renter, that don't want it in there. And so I would like to have you look at these pictures, the first ones start out with their yard, which they've mowed the weeds down and have it looking pretty nice right at the present time. But then if you move on past it, you will see what we're already putting up with, and if this gets any worse, it's not going to be good. And that's what I have to say, if anybody has any questions, happy to answer them if I can.
No?
Hello? My name is Andrea Cox, I own 511 Circle Drive, two doors down from Mrs. Spicer. I have more questions really than anything. Couple of things, has anybody required or will be requiring an environmental evaluation of a property like this? Was the subdivision process really done all the way if an address was never created? Do we have those records? Are the gentlemen aware of what the water and sewer taps cost and what's involved to get those? Can anybody tell us when the north side of Circle was rezoned to B2 rather than residential? No? Okay. What is a business like this going to do for our theft and crime? I have a direct line of sight to the storage units and frequently have issues there with theft, arrests, things of that nature, so what is the business owners going to be doing for security purposes and things to reduce and eliminate theft? Because obviously, an auto salvage yard has plenty of valuable parts there, so what are we doing about that? What exactly is the difference between auto salvage and auto repair? They've mentioned that really they don't want to operate as salvage. What exactly is the difference? Why are they being made to operate as a salvage yard rather than auto repair? Yeah, in general, I would say that I'm opposed to this business coming into the neighborhood. I think that, being that it does butt up to the backside of many houses, that it's probably not a good fit. I can see it from my back fence, even though I was not within the 300 feet, I did not receive a public hearing card in the mail because of that designation, but I can see them. Especially being on that south side, they have not enclosed that fence with something opaque, so it is definitely all open and definitely an eyesore. Okay, thank you.
Good evening, members of the council. I am here to just, I guess, state some opinions rather than facts and whatnot. I don't know the difference between auto salvage and mechanic, but I feel that the gentlemen here can bring a lot of improvement to the community. All of the issues that have been mentioned by the opposing members of the community are issues that have already existed. The gentleman cannot move forward until a decision is made. So they've mentioned that they can improve with the? So they've mentioned that they can improve with the privacy fence. They can plant grass and make that area better looking. I think that is something that we can agree that making the neighborhood look good is something that they're wanting to bring into that area and I apologize. Also, some of the problems that have been addressed are problems from the pallet side of it. I believe that the gentleman will do their part to keep rodents, snakes away. That is something that was there before them. They have addressed how they want to improve that. They will bring value to that side by bringing in customers. Transportation is very important, so they have parts for cars for, you know, everybody needs a way to get to work or to, you know, day-to-day activities. So I think that's something that will help their community, the community. Also, they're a younger generation. They are setting an example. They're being role models for other people to pursue their ambitions, their goals, their dreams. And I am in favor of this business being in place. If they do get approved, they have mentioned they are willing to work with the community members as far as addressing their needs and that's something I think they will do voluntarily, whether they, there's a regulation or they need to be supervised or monitored. I think that's something that they will do on their own, just because they want their business to succeed. They want to bring in revenue. They want to raise property value. Those are the things that they've addressed that I feel that they can accomplish if given the opportunity to move forward with this business. And that is all I have for today. Thank you.
Good evening, members of the council. My name is Jorge Guerrero. I have been a citizen and a resident here for 28 years of Fort Morgan. I have been living on the south side of Sherman for over 12 years and I've seen that property since I was going to school. And I can honestly say these boys have done a lot to clean it up within the short amount of time that they've had that property alone. So I've actually encountered these men and they've actually helped me out with my own vehicle. They do very good work. They have every guarantee that you need to make sure that your vehicle is in good hands. And I mean, if you're really looking for someone that's going to take care of you, that's really the best place you can go. And I did hear that people are talking about leaking oil and gas and all this other stuff. Well, that industrial street alone has oil field production services around there. So what stops that oil from falling on the ground? And if we're really going to be complaining about every little drop, I mean, we'd be nitpicking at every section of that street. I've been doing maintenance and industrial for over 12 years alone as well. So I've shared my trade in what I know in mechanical and automotive. And I've already seen their property myself firsthand and I've seen that they have cleaned it up quite a bit from what used to be a mechanic shop before there. So I do see that they could progress and I did hear them say that they were willing to help the community. And to me, that's a, that's a real big voice saying that, you know, "We really want you to accept us and let us into your community and we'd love to help you guys any way we can." So if that's not a friendly neighborhood hand, putting a hand out, I don't know what is. But I do have faith in what these guys are trying to do and yes, they did say that it was going to be an auto salvage yard because of the fact of the scrap cars that they have in that yard right now. But there are also cars with potential that they see potential in that could give someone an A to B car. And basically in times right now that are rough, I'm pretty sure that these men are willing to work with people that are really struggling in this time of need. So I'm all for this auto salvage yard because I really don't have to drive an hour out of my way to just go and get a part. I can come to my local neighborhood and get the part right here and make sure that it's guaranteed, no issues. Thank you.
Is there anybody else wishes to speak on this issue? Pardon me?
I just wanted to make another comment in here. When I bought my house in 1969, behind us was a clover field. The only thing back there was the little store on Charles Sherman. There was nothing else back there but clover. And now they've put all this other stuff back there. Well, our city forefathers deemed that the north side was commercial and the south side was residential. In that street, every house is in the lot. There's no empty lots anywhere in that. They're all residential houses that were built in 54 and 55. And now they've brought all of this business stuff in and I've been told when I was out collecting these signatures, that they have somewhere in 2010 changed the south side from residential to commercial, but they never notified the homeowners or anybody.
Mr. Mayor, I'm sorry, this is, we, for as a public hearing, I want to make sure we keep the integrity of it. That's, we're talking about this special use permit and the public comment, I believe, has closed, unless you want to ask if anyone else wants to speak, but I want to make sure we stay on topic, what we're considering for the fairness of this hearing and the property owner.
To this property?
Yeah, yeah.
Yes.
That's just what I wanted to add.
Okay, last time, is there anybody else wish to speak on this issue, for or against? Okay, seeing none. I would ask the city clerk if you've received any oral or written comments prior to this public hearing.
None through my office, Your Honor.
Counsel discussion, is there any questions or discussion from counsel?
I would bring up that with the location of the property, it's interesting. If it's on Sherman, that's mostly residential right there and everything and so therefore does not fit in. If you go over to Commerce, then that's mostly industrial. As a matter of fact, I know that just probably half a block down and across the street, you would have a place from the tow, where the, a tow company puts wrecked cars and everything has those there. So it makes it kind of difficult. But I think that it's kind of hard to ignore if we have 42, signatures of 42 residents from the area that are opposed to this business coming in. At the same time, I, you know, it's difficult because I love, these guys are, have already put up a privacy fence, at least boarding on Sherman and everything. They sound to me like that they're genuinely interested in trying to clean the property up and everything too. So it does create somewhat of a dilemma, almost the dilemma, like I said, facing Sherman versus facing Commerce.
You know, I don't, I don't know the history of this lot and what all has been there, what all businesses have tried to work there, but I drive by it every day on my way to work from my house and I will say that it looks substantially better now than it has in recent years. I will say that the work that they've done, putting up the fence, the black lining, has definitely improved. And the picture of the privacy fence with the grass, it made me really think, wow, that looks really nice. And I would encourage you, depending on how this comes, that if this were to take place, like take advantage of that because it looked really good. I think, I agree with Dr. Lindell. When you look at it, you know, they're across the street from Top Door, Slumber Jay, they're next to a storage unit, it's next to a gas station. That to me says, you know, that's part of industrial right there and seems to fit fine. I understand the concern of the people that are across the street from Sherman or the, across the lot behind the church. I understand that, you know, the worry about fence climbing and, but I think we just, as a community, if we decide to go forward, we have to just make sure we hold them to a high standard. Because I like the idea, I like the idea of young people coming in, chasing their dreams. That's what I think so much was great about Fort Morgan is that people are allowed to go out and pursue their dreams and I think it's a great idea and a great opportunity.
I agree with both the doc and Clint on everything they said, especially you guys in your age coming back. I mean, I think it's good to retain, retain our youth and keep our community young. I do, it's a B2, I know that people came up before, wanted to do a multi-unit, they had to get special use. It's going to come like when, what is going to be fine? Like what will be the best thing for you guys across the street on Sherman, the street to have? Like you're dictating what can happen across the street. And I agree with Clint, I think if they, they got the privacy fence, I don't know if we can, the city can put a probation on them, or they got a proba, or privacy fence, they have to do landscaping, they have to make it an upkeep to do it so it doesn't affect the people across the street on South Sherman Residential. But again, everything's coming in and off of Commerce Avenue where you got Slumber Jay, Top Door, and then to the west, you got nothing but storage units. That's kind of my feeling and I agree with everybody so far.
I, I've thought about this all week, but it helped to talk with you all. My husband and I came here and kind of doing some of the same thing and I really do admire your ambition and your willingness. However, I do think we do have to listen to people that, I mean, there is quite a few signatures and, and, you know, the people kind of rule. But I, I think, in sitting here listening, I think that you could maybe find a better piece of property you're renting and to buy it in the wa, and I think that you want to do a lot of things, but the cost of that is going to be quite a bit. And I, and I love your business idea. It's great and it's something we don't have and we definitely could use it. But I think if you would go, if you went around a little bit and found another piece of property, there's a lot of, a lot of property maybe down in there farther or something that didn't have quite this opposition and quite this many problems. And even like right now, not even having the water to go to the bathroom and wash your hands and all that stuff. I think you're, you have a big mountain to climb with expenses. But I, I just think you could maybe find a better place in the long run that would be better for you without all that kind of expense, even, even to rent. So if you owned it and if you had bought that, and that'd be a different story, you would have something invested already, but you don't, you're renting it. So if you would take some time even to see if you could find something else, would be a way to keep your business and to keep your, your dreams and your ideas. That's kind of my, I just think you have a huge, a huge mountain. Because I know when you have a lot of dreams, you want to do this, you want to do that, but then the, the money to actually do all that. I know how costly fences are and the water tap and all of that. And then the parts of the property, I don't know if you would, if you got that much against it, I don't know if you could afford to really stay there to do all those things. So I do admire your, your youth and what you're saying and your integrity and your, your plan. So don't, don't give up. Keep that, keep that there because it, when, when you have that kind of stuff, I know from experience, you can find the best. This might not be your, the best, but you can find the best if you're determined to do this business. I think it's great.
Well, got mixed emotions on both sides, but I agree with Lynn on that. I'm not going to continue to beat the horse up, so.
Short and sweet.
Chip, short and sweet.
Well, there's a lot of pertinent comments that have come to provision. I think your business plan is, got some merit. Coming as young individuals, I got respect for you. There's a lot, you're moving forward and in the right direction. You've brought up a lot of things that you feel are, you'd like to do and with having that split off and having to buy a water and sewer tap, I don't know if you realize the, the expenditure that that would, would incur or be having to put up privacy fence on there. That's, that's going to be, that would be a substantial cost on, on a rented property on there and, you know, I, I also commend you guys for your ingenuity in your business plan and putting it forward. But I don't know, it'll come out to where whatever, the majority of council votes to approve or not to approve, so.
Mr. Mayor, can I jump in to?
Yes, ma'am, you may.
I just wanted to, I was going to wait till the motion time, but I want, I wanted to share this while you're deliberating. I just want to make it clear that we're obligated to consider the criteria for approval in 20-3-110C, which they're the six criteria, that's on page two of three of your staff report. So your decision needs to be based on those factors. A lot of things that were mentioned fall outside of that, so be clear about that. And then your decision to grant or deny, again, is, is, is based on considering those factors. This is a B2 district, zoning district, general business, which is defined in our code, "The location of commercial uses that typically orients along a major thoroughfare." If you are approving, you know, there's the three conditions that are listed, but you can also add further conditions based on your evidence and testimony such as, for example, it's very typical, and also the applicant mentioned it, landscaping screening. Also, it was asked if there is a time limit. A lot of our cities actually, every special use or conditional use, they do one year and they come back. In the code, 120-3-110D3 says that the special use may be granted only for a defined period, after which it expires unless renewed. So a lot of times our other cities do that for a year to see how it's going and then they come back in front of you. So just again, be very clear, these are your decisions, but make sure they're based on the factors that are in, the criteria that are in the code.
So you're saying you, they can put in any requirements?
Any condition, oh, you mean a condition?
Any-
Yeah. So our code says any other condition, which is your opinion, the city council, necessary to render the special use compliant. So an example, it says, you know, the, to be in line with the comprehensive plan, to be compatible with the adjacent uses or the zone districts or to protect the health and welfare of the city residents. So you can't just, you know, pick things out of the air, but for example, landscaping would be a objective, correct condition if you were to go that route, if you felt that that was the only thing that was needed to, to be compatible with the adjacent uses, which is one of your criteria. So yeah, you can add on, you could, if you're going to prove, you could use these, you know, use staff's conditions and add on other conditions that relate to what we're here to talk about, like somehow helping with those, those impacts on the neighborhood. And that's, that's in our code D4 of 110-3, 203110.
Well, because I had some concerns with item one and three for the approval, which is compatible to the adjacent uses. Which way do you go? If you go to the west, it would fit into that usage. You go across the street and it's a complete contradictory to that adjacent uses and property. I mean, it's a, it's a nightmare property, really. I mean, because it doesn't, it just fits on a very narrow margin of approval. And then does it change the predominant character of the area? It can't, it, it has the potential to, but would it?
But that could be, it could be argued that any new business could change.
I'm just making a.
Yep, I'm just.
I mean, it's, it's a.
And it's a weird shaped property. It's an L-shaped property.
Yeah.
Which butts up against two, of a corner of two streets.
Two streets that are completely different.
So I just, yeah.
Well, I know that the staff has recommended two provisions. One is not inherent for future use of that portion and that they meet with the building and fire marshal to make sure that the building is appropriate and the property is done, whatever it is you, you would require of that.
And staff also recommended, if you're going to approve, that the city issues a separate address with a lot on Commerce Avenue.
And it's already been subdivided off that property or would that have to be subdivided?
No, I believe it's a separate parcel. I looked for that, but I believe it is.
Okay.
Is it easy to put up anything on the screen? To put the zoning map or no? Okay, that's fine. It's helpful if you guys look at the zoning map of the, I don't know if that helps for you guys.
There was one in our packet.
Oh, there was.
Probably from the earlier, I don't know if that was a zoning map.
Are those storage units on a B2?
Yes.
Yeah, seeing yes, so, yeah.
And across the street, Slumber Jay's on a B2.
I believe that whole area is zone B2.
B2, that, that square.
Yeah, I believe that's correct without the absence of a zoning map.
I'm looking, I'm looking at the zoning map, yeah.
What is the zoning map?
So, to the north and the south of the lot is B2. To the west is green and brown, high density residential. And then to the, I'm sorry, to the east is medium density residential.
So it's all B2 on that section, but across the street and on Circle Drive is residential? What it looks like to me?
Yeah, I haven't.
It's R2.
Medium density residential, yeah.
R2 across the street and R1.
Find it once we're done with it.
It's page 52 in the packet.
Would have been nice to have a recommendation from the planning commission, but.
It's our job. Pass the vote, that's okay, we can do it.
So would requiring a landscape screening and authorizing it for a period, a short period of time to check back in and on the operation be acceptable additions to fit within the requirements?
Those are appropriate code, yeah, conditions in the code that you can choose to place on, if that's where you're going.
Comments or are we ready to close the public hearing and take it to a vote?
I'm, I'm good.
Okay.
I'm good.
No other comments or discussion from council regarding this? I would entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
So moved.
I have a motion by Kevin Lindell, a second by Clint Anderson. All in favor of closing the public hearing?
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. That motion carries. Council action, Ms. Williams.
Um, yes, council, I alluded to this earlier, but in first, you know, again, in making your decision whether to approve, deny, or approve or deny with conditions, conditionally approving or denying, granting the special use permit, you know, you consider the criteria for approval in code section 20-3-110C. Should you be conditionally approving, which is one of your four options, there's three recommended conditions should you be going that route in your staff report in addition to the other type of conditions that we spoke about or that are in the code.
I would entertain a resolution for approval or denial of the special use permit.
Your honor, I offer a resolution to approve forever auto salvage for the special use permit to operate in the B2 zoning district. And under the, these conditions, that it's only for the business operating as forever auto salvage, that the business owners schedule a meeting with the chief building official and fire marshal, determine building and fire code requirements, that the city issues a separate address for a Commerce Avenue address, that they approve the landscaping on the outside part of the fence, also adding the privacy fence, and that this is in for one year and it returns back to council for renewal? Is that what it would be? Is it a renewal?
That you're granting the special use for a year, after which time it shall expire unless renewed, subject to all the requirements of the section.
What she said.
You have all that, John?
I think so.
Okay.
Second.
I have a motion by Clint Anderson, or a resolution, I should say.
I second.
You second. And I have a second by Brian Erdi Alice. Vote by roll call.
Resolution fails on a vote of four to two with council members Erdi Alice and Anderson voting for.
Are there any other motions? Because I believe that you, you need to have affirmative majority vote on either granting, conditionally granting, or denying the special use permit application. Unless Steve or John disagree with me.
What was your, what's your?
I believe this is in front of you to make a, either, you're either granting, conditionally granting, or denying a special use permit application. So right now, there's been, not been an affirmative vote on any of those three.
It seems that the motion was to approve and failed, so that to me is a denial.
So do we need a, you're saying we need a motion?
Well, John, if Steve agrees and then if it's, that there's not a majority, you know, there wasn't a majority to fail, that it's a denial, that's, that's fine.
You're illegal, so if you have a recommendation, I would sure entertain your expertise.
Do you want us to do?
I, I, yes, I believe that there should be a motion for the, one of those three options because you need to make a decision based on these criteria. So you're either approving, you're either granting, conditionally granting, or denying.
Okay.
Based on the criteria.
As opposed to just a unilateral motion or resolution?
Well, there hasn't been an affirmative action yet.
Okay.
Because otherwise, there's nothing for the property owner to, it could be implied that it's a denial, but there's, there needs to be an action for them to know what their next action is.
Can you suggest what that?
So, for example, if the people who didn't vote, who voted against that motion feel that they want to deny it based on the criteria, then the motion would be to deny the special use permit application after considering the following criteria. If the reason why you didn't vote for it is because you wanted to grant it with no conditions, you would grant the special use permit just outright. So those are your two remaining options.
Okay, I'll try it.
I can see where the planning commission went.
Ron, can we, do you want me to talk or not?
Yep.
Okay. Can we just do, to make a resolution to deny the application for special use permit on the criteria?
Based on which of the six?
Make it simple.
Issues, is that correct?
Yeah, you're, you're tasked with considering the criteria for approval and if after considering those criteria, you can make that motion to either grant or deny, so yes. And the reason why you would deny is because the applicant did not demonstrate, if you were going to deny, that the applicant did not demonstrate that those criteria had been met.
I think I got it.
Okay.
Your honor, I offer a resolution to deny the application for the special use permit to operate an auto salvage business in B2 zoning district near 207 South Sherman on the issue of not meeting any of the criteria.
Any other criteria or does it need to be specific, one through, on one, any of the one through six?
The record speaks for itself, so you, you don't need to repeat the record, but if upon considering all testimony and evidence in the record, you've considered the criteria, you're allowed to either approve or deny, so.
So my resolution stands?
If it gets a second.
Second.
I have a resolution by Lynn Deal, a second by Doug Sauschow. Vote by roll call.
That resolution carries on a vote of four to two with council members Anderson and Erdi Alice voting against.
Can I make a, the motion fails?
Passed. Well, the special use failed.
Can I make a comment?
Sure.
I, I would just encourage you, you guys have done a lot of work, y'all have done a lot of due diligence. Don't let this kill your dream, let you motivate you. I think there's a need and a great opportunity for your business. Just keep pursuing it. This is just, for whatever reason, the timing wasn't right here, but just keep working hard and keep, keep working at it, man.
I second what Clint said, absolutely.
Next is a presentation of possible action on bids for a shelter structure for Twaymore Farms project. Mr. Hamer.
Mr. Mayor, council. Boy, so we have a couple of things tonight to look at for the Twaymore Trails property. The first one is a shelter that we're going to put out there at the trailhead. We went out to bid on August 27th and the, the process closed on September 10th. We had several bids, we had four bids ranging from $14,300 all the way to $17,500. Some included installation and others didn't, and there was a wide range of installation cost as well. And the reason we kind of kept that separate, Doak's staff, the park staff actually has installed these type of things before, but they're so busy, I kind of wanted to see what it would cost to have one installed. So we're looking for approval tonight to go with the bid from RCP Shelter for a 16 by 24 shelter in the amount of $15,305 with their installation of $4,850. Also, within that approval, we're seeking an additional amount of $9,845 just to cover the installation of footers and cement pad, which Doak and his guys will oversee that side of the project. And then the, the RCP company will ship the shelter to us and install it, so. That's one aspect tonight, and then I have another one after that one. If you have any questions on the shelter, I can try to answer them. Did I get all that right?
How much is left in that CPW grant for these projects?
So it's getting tight. The total budget's $331,000. The grant was $225,000, I believe, and the match was around $94,000. But we have a pretty big contingency in the construction cost for the actual trail. So I think we're going to make it after this, these two steps tonight. I need to be looking at benches and interpretive signage and that kind of stuff. Those are the last steps, so we're getting close, but I think I'm going to be on budget.
So do we have any match money that we put, need to put in on?
All of this is in the, in the project budget. We, we just went to bid because it's a big purchase.
Okay.
It's all part of the, the project. It's already been approved.
Okay.
And then would they start insulation, everything on this?
Oh, no, this is just a shelter, so it's a metal roof and posts.
Right, but when will they install it?
Oh, insulation, I'm sorry, I thought you said insulation.
Oh, no.
I think all this is probably going to happen in the spring, Brian.
Okay.
You know, we, we won't look to install these, this feature as well as the next one until the parking lot is done. I'm hoping the trail and the parking lot will be done before winter hits. But then we've got some prep work to do for, for the shelter as well as for the, the bathroom that I'm going to bring to you next. And it takes time to build these things. They're, they're, you know, they are constructed on a wood, they're not just. They're, you know, they are constructed on a, they're not just sitting in a warehouse somewhere, so it'll take a little bit of time.
Okay.
Any other questions for Ty? I would entertain a resolution. Your honor, I offer a resolution to accept a bid from RCP Shelter for $15,305 with insulation $4,850, not to exceed $30,000.
Second.
Second. I have a resolution by Doug Sashow, a second by Brian Erdy Ellis. Vote by roll call.
That resolution carries unanimously.
All right. Want me to keep going, Mr. Mayor?
Next is a presentation on bids for precast restroom facility for the Twaymore Trails project.
Yep. So this is another aspect that'll be in the parking lot area, sort of next to the shelter, but a little bit farther away. It's a vault restroom, it's a dry restroom, so your fancy porta potty, basically, like what we have at the back of Riverside as well as the front of Riverside. We went out to bid in the same time schedule. We only had one bid come back from UBC PreCast. UBC PreCast is the company that's currently building our restrooms for Brenda Joy and Optimist Park. We feel pretty confident in their ability as well as in their bid. We, even though we didn't have any competing bids, we've had similar projects in the past. In, in, let's see, in 2010, we did the double vault in the front of Riverside, and that was about a $37,000 project. And then back in 2013, we did a single vault on the east side of Riverside. That was around $20,000. So we're thinking the $41,150 that they bid for this project is probably in line, and we feel comfortable moving forward with that. I am asking for a, a small contingency, $2,500, just because we need to do some dirt work ahead of time. Our guys will prep the site and dig the holes and, and be there to assist with a front-end loader and stuff when this comes in to do the backfill and that kind of stuff, so, just to make sure we have enough on that. So we're looking for approval to go with UBC PreCast for an amount not to exceed $43,650, and this is for a double ADA vault-style restroom for the Twaymore Trail.
And this will be another spring project too, probably?
Yep, same deal. And again, these are, just like the restrooms for Brenda Joy and Optimus, it's taken longer due to COVID. This will be built, you know, as soon as we order it, so I'm guessing it probably won't even be ready till March or something.
Is this one of the composting?
Yeah. Yeah, so it'll have two giant cement vaults that go in the ground, and then we add organisms and stuff that eat away the waste. I think they have to pump them out maybe once a year, not even that, not sure.
Okay. Anybody have any questions for Ty on this? I would entertain a resolution.
Your honor, I offer a resolution on the bids for a precast restroom facility for Twaymore Trails project, approving the bid from UBC PreCast for a double vault ADA restroom for the Twaymore Trails project in the amount of $41,150 with a contingency of $2,500 for a total not to exceed $43,650.
Second. I have a resolution by Lynn Deal, a second by Kevin Lindell. Vote by roll call.
That resolution carries unanimously.
Thanks, guy. Thanks, Ty.
Next is a presentation on bids for sale shades for the downtown area. Ms. Crossway.
Hi, good evening. So in your packet, you have a memo going over the sale shade bids that I received and which one I would like to move forward with. This is all in part with the CDOT grant that we've received for Revitalized Main Street, and so it's focused on creating outdoor seating and increasing safe access to our downtown while keeping in mind the COVID-19 restrictions that are in place throughout the state. So part of that grant funds that we want to use is to create outdoor seating for our Main Street locations. And so we went out to bid for some sale shades, and so we've received three bids. The one that I'd like to go with is Shelter Specialists. They are, I provided in the memo a rendering of what the sale shade will look like. The colors, it won't be those colors, but that's basically the layout of it, and it'll take over the surface area, which is about 37 by 19 by 18 by 27 feet, and it's going to be located there on a, I believe that's Beaver Avenue on both the east and west end of it, or on those corner bulbouts that you see on Main Street. If you have any questions about the bid or the sale shades, I'd be happy to answer.
The, those shades, sometimes they look kind of, are you sure they would fit there on the corner and not look cluttery with that tree and the, the bulbout?
No, so I went ahead and went out to, with the Streets Department and, or I went with JW and Brent and as well as Doak to go measure it out, and so it's a pretty good distance from the buildings that are located there, and I think it's going to add a really nice feature, a really nice architectural feature to our downtown, and again, provide that outdoor seating that we don't have.
Where's the seat, what type of seating?
Yeah, so we're going to move forward with different types of geometrical-looking benches, and so we've moved forward with ordering those, and you'll see a different layout within each shade, but the materials and the types of benches will coordinate.
Because I got, I've had lots of requests from downtown people about more benches because of the, all the activities that go down there, so people can sit.
Yeah, there'll be benches underneath the shades and also.
Did you talk to the business people, did you bring that to a meeting?
Yeah, so I actually went out and spoke to the owners of Double R Embroidery and also the business owner and building owner, owners over there at the Gold and Silver Trading Company, and I spoke with them about what our plans were to put those sale shades, and they were in agreement with it.
Good, that's good. Good deal for Main Street.
So you're going to do the benches and the sale shades with that CDOT grant?
Yeah, so part of the grant funds will be used for that as well as providing wayfinding signage and also a campaign around share the road with bicyclists.
Did you say there's going to be bike racks or anything like that? Did you say that at the last meeting too?
Yeah, we've actually already purchased bike racks, and so they're in storage. They should start getting installed maybe mid next week, and so there'll be bike racks all throughout Main Street as well as Beaver, Bijou, and Kaewa.
And when do you project the shades to go in, in the spring as well?
No, so with this grant, we have to spend all the funds this year and have everything installed this year. So based on the bid that they provided, once we put the order, it's about eight to 12 weeks out, and we've coordinated with our Streets Department to be able to ensure that we can install them once we get them, so that we meet the requirements of the grant.
Thank you.
Any other questions for Ms. Crossway? I'd entertain a resolution.
Okay, which one did you want? The Shelter Specialist?
Shelter Specialist, yeah.
Your honor, I offer a resolution on the bids for the sale shades for downtown area for Shelter Specialist LLC for $25,003.
Second. I have a resolution by Lynn Deal and a second by Doug Sashow. Vote by roll call.
That resolution carries unanimously.
Thank you.
Good job finding that grant.
Next is a presentation on a resolution appointing city staff to the city, as city representatives for the Nebraska Municipal Power Pool. Mr. Nation.
Good evening. I apologize for this one. I didn't realize we had to have designated people appointed to this board. This is the services organization that goes along with MEAN and NPGA, our gas provider, and they, they, they'll provide cost of service studies and, you know, installation programs. We direct a lot of our, if people want to get into LED lighting in their businesses, we direct them to this group here in town, and so they provide different things that we belong to. I didn't realize we actually had, you know, a designated spot on their board, so I'm kind of surprised by that. So, so they, they noticed that we hadn't updated that with the rest of our resolutions earlier in the year, so this is just kind of a bookkeeping thing. I went ahead and had myself put as the, as the main person on there and Doug Linton as the, as the backup. So be happy to answer any questions.
Housekeeping.
Yes.
Any questions? I'd entertain a resolution.
Your honor, I offer a resolution appointing city staff as the city's representative on the Nebraska Municipal Power Pool member. Council?
I have a resolution by Doug Sashow, a second by Brian Erdy Ellis. Vote by roll call.
That resolution carries unanimously.
Thank you.
House is clean.
Thanks, man.
Next is discussion on possible direction and location of a planned splash pad. Mr. Glenn Meyer.
All right, thank you, your honor. What you have in your packet to consider tonight is a request for direction on location of a community splash pad and what we'll call an inclusive playground, a lot of times referred to as an ADA accessible playground. These two items were discussed and budgeted in the 2020 budget process to include these amenities in the city of Fort Morgan. As we've progressed into the design here, we're finding that these elements do take considerable space and a little bit more funding than what we anticipated. I think this project is going to be funded in two years. We've got some money in this year's budget and some money in next year's budget to tackle these, these projects, in particular, the ADA playground. The splash pad project, depending on where you locate that, could be paid for out of Fieldhouse funds. So what staff has done is tried to articulate in your memo both pros and cons for both sites. I think both sites lend themselves for some positives and for some negatives, and perhaps you can, you know, determine some others that maybe we didn't think of. I've also tried to include some exhibits in your packet that show how these might fit at each site, or at least how much space it might take at City Park. It was tough to get these exhibits to show up very well on, on the City Park Google Maps, if you will. Much easier with the Fieldhouse because we've got some design drawings and things we could manipulate there. But if you look at the first exhibit, it does show sort of that Google Earth of City Park in just one area in particular where this might be located and what we had thought about. It's sort of that southwest corner there by the gazebo. There used to be a train art piece there on that piece of concrete, so we envisioned kind of plunking it into that corner. You can see it does take a considerable amount of space, wraps itself around the gazebo there and almost from the corner all the way up to the gazebo. If you look at the second set of exhibits, these are designated at the Fieldhouse site. The first one's kind of an overall site plan of what the Fieldhouse outside would look like with all the landscaping and sidewalks and such, and then just a zoomed-in view of where these amenities might fit at that site as well, and how they would integrate within the overall landscaping and design. So I don't know that there's much else I can say about it, but certainly happy to answer questions and just try to guide the discussion on, on those pros and cons. And again, I think both sites have, have positives and negatives, as you can see, so happy to help with the conversation.
Are these both the same footprint at City Park and the one that you're proposing, or?
Yeah, that's what we try.
Are they the same footprint?
Yeah, pretty much the same size of footprint on that Google Earth image that you see that's sort of outlined there. Yes, exactly the same footprint size.
Things that I would make comments on, number one, down at City Park with the playground, there's already a playground over by the library, so I would think that if we were trying to do an ADA playground like that and everything, it probably would be best utilized just expanding that playground that we have there, and then it wouldn't take as much room away from events and everything that you're talking about. When you look at where you would be putting things in over on the Fieldhouse, is that where it was slated that if we ever wanted to expand it specifically for aquatics and stuff, where that would go, or does it not interfere with that?
Yeah, we've tried to integrate that so it doesn't interfere. If you look at the zoomed-in site, you can see that section of sidewalk on the very north side of that ADA playground. That's really where the edge of the Aquatic Center building would be, would be on the north side of that sidewalk. So we've tried to really fit it in that, in that area of what really is anticipated to be native landscaping at the moment. So yeah, it doesn't take away from that, and we've also tried to incorporate the future expansion for the community room, which we've tried to show on there as well, so that we didn't take away from that element should it ever be added on as well.
Okay, super. My biggest comment about it, and I've had this discussion with Steve before and everything, is that, at least in my view and everything, and probably because of my age in a large part, I view splash pads as almost as much of a spectator thing, or maybe even more so, than a participant. In other words, sitting, I love sitting around and watching kids play on a splash pad and everything. I could do that for a long time. And so I think that if you look at that aspect, it would be, make much more sense to have it down in City Park where there's higher traffic, we're trying to draw people downtown and everything from that. I question if we had the splash pad out by the Fieldhouse, how much, I don't know if it would get utilized as much. I don't think there's as much traffic now, and you know, people might say, I'm going to go and work out, and you kids are out here and playing, although I'm not sure we really would want that going on either. But those are my thoughts, and like I said, my thought would be that it would be better utilized down in City Park, and that the playground would be better to just expand the existing one and/or replace it to have it ADA accessible in the same place that the other playground is, which would not take extra room away from events in City Park.
I should mention also the Fieldhouse site. In the future, is proposed to have a rather large outdoor soccer field area, rather large lawn, if you will, where you could do soccer and various other types of amenities. But the point is well taken, that City Park is well-developed, there's nice trees there, there's a lot of traffic in that area, and so yeah, that's certainly one of the pros, that it's, it's near all of those elements that bring people in to, to that site, and the Fieldhouse is obviously new construction and not much out there. So, you know, the hope is that eventually folks will, will draw out to that area for recreating in general, including the outdoor turf area that we hope to build in the next few years.
I agree totally, though, with Kevin. I think it would be better served over by where that playground area is, because this gets real congested with, and it's right to the car show and a lot of events.
Yeah, there's not a lot of room over by the existing playground for the splash pad at City Park. If we did build an, an inclusive playground there, an ADA playground, we'd have to double the size of the one that's there. These ADA playgrounds take a one to 12 slope to get into the elements, and it, so for every foot you rise, you need 12 feet of run, and it just takes up a, that's why it's so large on both of these maps. So recognizing that at best you'd have to put it on the south side of the band shelf if you were going to put it in that corner, so it'd have to be somewhere further this direction.
That, just, I don't like that there at all.
Yeah, I mean, it could certainly fit anywhere at City Park, we just wanted to identify just how much space it would actually take.
What about all that, over on that corner? Well, I think there's, there's seating there, though.
Yeah, it's, it's tough to fit it. We really need a rather large area. It's conceivable you could expand the existing playground there into an ADA playground, but you couldn't cohabitate the two together. There's just not enough room for the splash pad and the playground in the same space. That playground would just be so much larger than what you see today. It'd be about double the size.
Is there room there between the band, the back of the band shelf and?
I don't believe there would be.
Hmm, wow.
Yeah. And then again, I would point out the cost and the funding. the funding. Those are two big pieces that we're concerned about. Much easier to build all of these things at the Fieldhouse because it's an undeveloped site, and you're not tearing up any existing infrastructure. If we do go to City Park, particularly with the splash pad, I mean, we've got to dig up the road to install a water tap, because these take a two-inch water tap in order to operate. And that's much easier done at the Fieldhouse, of course, but certainly can be done at City Park, but just recognize that we're digging out to the main water line and installing a two-inch water tap and tearing out curb gutter, sidewalk, grass, all of those things in order to get it installed there.
Steve, if we go downtown, we'll have to put in this public restroom, like in here.
Yeah, that is a concern. We talked about restrooms. You know, certainly folks could conceivably use the library museum, but it's really not meant for that.
Right.
The Fieldhouse, the flooring that we've installed, at least up into the restrooms, is all either polished concrete or tile. So, it's much easier for somebody coming off a splash pad that's wet to go into the Fieldhouse and use the restroom than it would be to come off a splash pad and go into the museum-
Yeah.
-or the library and use the restroom, because it's carpet and various other things.
I'd be in favor of going out in the Fieldhouse.
Yeah, me too.
And then also, we would lose, it looks like, at least three parking spaces.
Yeah.
Probably more with that. And I know parking downtown's an issue.
Yeah, it's conceivable you could put those restrooms somewhere other than, I suppose, in the parking. That was just a, an idea that was articulated. But yeah, I think at some point, you would really want to look at, at a restroom facility if you were going to put it at City Park.
I, I would be in favor of the Fieldhouse.
Yeah, me too. Me too.
I, you know, I, I see Kevin's point, but it concerns me being on that corner, right, on Main Street.
Yeah, I don't like that.
I think it would need to be fenced in and, and contained, just because of the traffic and the busyness down there. And secondly, it would take away a lot of space from our big events, Bob Stock, the car show-
Yeah.
This break the silence that, that they had, and some of those. But on the same note, it, it would be kind of an attractant for downtown, but I don't know how much you would get, you know, how-
Too big.
-business attraction it, it would get or not. So-
Too bad we couldn't have the-
Not having to tear up the grass and dig up the streets to tie into the water main. The Fieldhouse area seems like the most logical at this point in time, especially since we'll be having the fam, the multifamily units that'll be there. And that, hopefully, we'll get a lot of traffic and attraction to the Fieldhouse and such. I, I would say, for me, the Fieldhouse property would probably work better cost-wise and safety-wise. My, my thoughts.
Yeah, me too.
Doug?
I'm kind of leaning towards the mayor's idea. I really like the idea of being downtown, but you brought up some good points. Kids running in and out of traffic, maybe, you know? And we do have the big events down there. But I'm, I'm leaning more towards the Fieldhouse also.
Clint?
I like the idea of both. I, I think if we're going to do the inclusive playground, I think that's what suits better for the Fieldhouse. I'm not opposed to having a splash pad or have, I was actually at, where is it? Douglas County Library. They had us, like a, just a sheet of concrete water shot out, and my kids played in it for an hour. So, I think we don't necessarily have to go big with the inclusive playground. If we do decide to go towards City Park, I think, I would like to see one in City Park eventually, but I think if, if I have to pick, I would say I would favor the Fieldhouse. But I do, I do like the idea of keeping it in the back burner for City Park and just trying to look at some different ideas, maybe a smaller splash. I don't even know what the technical name would be, but just, you know, some fountains.
Sure.
That are playable.
They have them like by Union Station where they just shoot up and get the front.
Yep.
Yeah, and this one has all those elements and a few other things as well. So, yeah, it's amazing how elaborate these things can get. We're not looking to be real elaborate on this, but it does have some, some features and elements that also act as art features. You know, that was a real draw to downtown as well. It would be a nice-looking project that, that kind of looked like some public art. You'll get that at the Fieldhouse as well, just not as visible from, you know, the traveling public, for sure. But, so I think that's good direction for staff. I appreciate the conversation, and we can certainly continue to look, is there a smaller feature or amenity we can get at City Park in the near future and, and maybe accomplish both desires. So.
Is there any, too bad we couldn't have that restroom at the park.
Yeah.
The City Park. Maybe someday we need to have a little-
Yeah, that's probably something, you know, as we get into discussions for future budgets that we can sure talk about.
Yeah, but that, this, I agree. Fieldhouse.
Okay, so you-
I think I have the direction I need. Yep. Thank you.
Next is discussion on approval of mayor, which was supposed to be counsel's day off for the day after Thanksgiving.
The mayor gets a day off?
The mayor gets a day off.
Ever.
Everybody else works double. No, thank you, your honor. I come on behalf of all of the employees of the city of Fort Morgan, requesting that you all would consider by resolution tonight allowing the employees the day after Thanksgiving off.
Yes.
And we appreciate your consideration of that. I know the employees would love to have that day, an extra day to be with their families and maybe shop online or whatever they might be doing.
Black Friday, man. I would entertain a resolution.
Your honor, for a resolution on approving the mayor's day off for, for the day after Thanksgiving?
Second. I have a resolution by Doug Sasha, a second by Kevin Lindell. Vote by roll call.
That resolution carries unanimously.
Thank you all very much.
Counsel approved. Next is discussion and possible direction on filling the council vacancy in Ward Two. Mr. Brennan.
Thank you, your honor. In your packet is a, kind of a memo that outlines the process, the charter requirements for filling vacancies, and the practice that we have used in, in some recent instances of vacancies. So, basically, the council appoints an eligible person to fill the vacancy, and that person serves until the next regular election, regular municipal election. So, Allison Howe had about 16 months left in her, in her full term and would have been required to stand for reelection in the November 2021 election. The person chosen to replace her would be the same. They would serve a little over a year and then have to be reelected to continue. We have received two vacant, or two applications. At the time I prepared the memo that's in your packet, we had only received one. We got another one yesterday, and I included, or emailed that to the council and included it in your table files. So, as you know, all appointments have to be done by ballot. So, the council has any number of options. You can, you know, set a deadline for acceptance of further applications. You can declare that the application period is over, and we've got two applicants, and you're going to choose one of them. You know, you can do it however you'd like. Both of the candidates are here tonight, and I think are prepared to make their pitch if that's the direction you decide to go, so.
Okay. Counsel's thoughts?
I think since we have two applicants and everything, and we have them both here, that we ought to just go ahead and proceed, since it does make a competition. They could give their presentation, we could vote, and it's out of the way.
Oh, and it has been open for three weeks. So.
Let's go for it.
Yeah, let's go for it.
Okay, luck of the draw. Who wants to come before counsel first and give us your, tell us a little bit about yourself, why you would like to fill this empty counsel spot, and-
You want me to sign that, or?
No, that's okay.
No.
Okay. Good evening, counsel. I am John Kaper. I've been a resident of Fort Morgan since 85, been an employee with the city. I've been in law enforcement in Morgan County. Currently, the last 15 years, I've been a employee of Colorado Energy, working as a power plant production manager. I enjoy working with people as law enforcement. I've always worked with the community. I've always enjoyed the interaction with the community. I think I bring something to the table with my time in Morgan County and the communication or the contacts that I've made with the citizens. Active in my church, active in my community, doing fundraising, part of the five, Faith Five K that you're familiar with, raising money for Rising Up and our Veterans Association. My family, I've raised a couple of kids out of here, Brendan and I have, been married 38 years, and she's a teacher in the community for 36 years. So, I think we're well grounded within this area. My experience with electric department and also now in the power industry, I think I bring something to a vision of where power and power usage goes to, and I think I can bring some thoughts into that to the council. I grew up in a restaurant, so I understand businesses and the pressures of people that own businesses and working with the downtown, trying to increase traffic flow. And I appreciate what you guys have done for grants to support those businesses. I, as a public servant for many years, I understand who I answer to. I do answer to the citizen, and I feel that's part of a, being on the council, being a conduit for the community to the board to address concerns or ideas. So, I just would like to have my name considered for that position for Ward Two. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Andrew?
Thank you for letting me speak. I'm really excited of the opportunity to be a council person. I was born and raised in Fort Morgan. My family operated a business here for 30-plus years. I think I bring a young perspective, something that, a voice for people who, who may not know they have a voice in this community, you know, the younger generation who aren't out there and aren't participating maybe the way they should. I've always had a strong passion for local government, and it's long been a dream to participate further in that. Yeah, I really haven't prepared anything really grand, but I hope you take me into consideration, and I look forward to the opportunity to serve as a council member. Thank you.
Thanks. Ballots? I guess first off, I would ask, does counsel have any questions for either of the candidates?
I guess I would, I guess I would ask, what's drawing the interest? What, what now has piqued y'all's interest in coming for this opening? It's been kind of a- You want us to pull this down? Yep, yeah, both of you open.
It's been something I've looked at. The timing worked out really well. So, I felt like I should jump on it with this opportunity to get a taste of the council for a year and a half. And at that point, if it's something that I enjoy, I could run for the position at that time. So, I just felt like timing at this time, but it's been something I've been, been wanting to pursue.
For me, I've, I've always had a, an interest in the way our city runs. My, my parents were involved in some form or another of politics, and it always presented an interest to me. Just being a part of, of the city, I love this town. I was born and raised in Fort Morgan, and I'd love to see it continue to grow and, and do good. And being a part of that is, is something that's exciting to me.
And, can I ask one more? What is, if you had one goal, if you could sit there in these next 18 months that you could accomplish before you decide to run or do not decide to run for office, what is that one goal that you hope to take place in the next 18 months?
That was a fun one. I, I even put it on my application, Clint. I'm not going to hide words, but I think transparency is an area that I think we can always improve in. Use of monies by the city council or by the city. Being fiscally responsible, that's something I teach through the Dave Ramsey program is, you know, and I try to, you know, push that through our church. And I just think that's part of the city's responsibility, be fiscally responsible with the tax monies that are given. So, to improve transparency.
For me, I'd, I'd say a, a goal would be improving the economy right now. I've always had a heart for downtown and Main Street, and it's definitely, we're starting to do a lot better than we have, but we still see a lot of empty and vacant buildings down there. You drive down, you see, I think I counted the other day, 22 storefronts and office spaces that sit vacant on the immediate four blocks of Main Street. So, I think, I think my main goal would be to encourage growth in the business sector and encouraging businesses to continue to operate downtown and in the greater Fort Morgan area.
Anybody else? Good question. Clint?
Thanks, thank you.
Thank you.
Excuse me, Ron. Can I get Andrew's last name?
Steve.
Steve. Okay, I did hear that.
Okay, the result of the vote is five for Mr. Kaper and one for Mr. Steve.
Anything else on that one? Okay. Are we, I guess we don't have to vote again, then?
No.
Okay.
No, and I think we'll have to swear them in next time. I wasn't, I didn't think about that.
Wasn't ready for that one, yeah.
But I think this is basically the last thing on the agenda for tonight besides the executive session, so.
Reports and bids.
Reports and bids. Okay. So either you don't have the...
Yeah.
You don't have anything for swearing in this evening?
We could. I could, I don't have an oath with me. I could try and get one. Do you want to do that?
I would say if that was the deal, we may as well...
Okay, hang on, give me a minute.
Get them on board if, if you can.
Maybe Steve can do some reports in the meantime.
I could do some reports, and we can stall a little if you give John a chance to go find a...
Is that acceptable, Nina?
Yes.
That's the normal process.
Yes, that's it.
That they're sworn in and seated right away.
Okay.
Thank you.
Andrew, I'd like to thank you for putting in your, your application and applying for it. I would suggest or recommend that you continue it if it's something you would like to do in the future. We need additional people, and it's a thankful job. Well, let's go to reports by officials and staff.
All right. Thank you, Your Honor. Just a few things to report. I think, first of all, I'd like to just invite Brent to maybe stand up. I just, you know, we've been working on what to do about my replacement, and, you know, I invited Brent to consider maybe taking my position and absorbing that into his and be, becoming a utility slash public works director. So we put him under an interim title and let him consider that. It's been three months, and, you know, I've beat Brent enough that he's decided he wants to take it permanently. No, I'm really excited that, you know, Brent and I have talked about it, yeah. For sure, yeah. But just excited that Brent was willing to consider it and give it a, give it a shot, and, and he's thought a lot about it and, and has decided to take that on permanent as, as a combined department. So appreciate Brent and all the work he does. It's a rather large department. There's a lot to do, clearly, even with the public hearing tonight. I mean, those things take a lot of time, and so I appreciate that he's willing to do that, and, and just want to pull that interim tag off of that title and make it permanent, so. Yeah.
Need a larger plate, my friend.
Yeah. I know he's got a three-hour speech he'd like to give. Clint, is that okay?
He's getting three minutes.
Oh. Thank you, Brent. Just a couple of other updates. We talked a little bit about the, the Field House. If you haven't been out there, things are changing rapidly, and if you would like to walk around out there, John and I were out there the other day, and now that they've started to put the skin on the, on the walls, it sure made that building very big. So if you'd like to go stand in the middle of the gymnasium, it is a rather large and impressive structure. I'd be happy to take you out there anytime, just let me know, and I can pick you up or meet you out there, and we can take a walk through there and describe the elements and, and how that's gonna look. But it is coming along rather rapidly, and we're trying to get that dried in before winter, and I think we're gonna hit that target, so. And then just in your packet, you've got a big envelope of budget documents. Those are just for you to peruse until next Tuesday when we meet for our budget retreat. But if you have questions in the meantime, sure, feel free to reach out to me. You'll see some new documents in there. Don't get too excited about all of the detail. We'll talk through all of that. There's a five-year capital plan. There's a lot of information in there. There are some new summary sheets for each of the different budgets, but we'll talk through a lot of those, but appreciate you taking the time to look through those. Give a lot of credit to Jeannie. She's done a lot of work. I've thrown a lot at her with some of these new things that I've, I've been looking for, and she stepped right up to the plate and took care of those. And so appreciate that, Jeannie, and, and again, just call or, or reach out if you have questions over the next week, so. I'll look out to the room. Staff, anybody? Brent?
I think you can talk as long as you want to, but he said three minutes.
I can do this in under three minutes, so. Just real quickly, we have finished up our paving projects, including our chip seal projects for the year. The only thing we have left is we have a little bit of warranty work that's gonna come up, and so we've had a little bit of trouble with some asphalt that was put down two years ago, but the contractor's gonna do, fix it under his warranty and get that taken care of. So we'll announce those if there's any closures associated with that work later, but it's nice to have all that behind us as the weather starts to change. And then just real quickly, we continue to monitor the Center Point Square, the multi-housing project. They should start pouring curb gutter and sidewalk tomorrow. If they get all their stuff, they've got their string lines and everything ready to go, so we're hoping to see that with asphalt following quickly. And so they're doing everything they can to meet, getting all the infrastructure in here in the next couple of weeks. So we're excited to see that. They continue to let us, you know, oversee what's going on over there. Derek's spending some time with them as they, they do their QC work. We're, we're watching it to make sure everything's up to our quality, so. But everything's looking good, and we're excited to see that project moving along, so. And I am excited to take over the position. I did have the ability, I did sit down with all of my departments and had one massive meeting with all my superintendents, and I think the way that the departments work, they blend well together. The way my time's allocated on the utility side to where I need to have time allocated to the, the public work side of it, and the public work side of it's mostly just at my desk anyway, so it's just doing more work as I'm at my computer and have time. And so I think right now I don't see it as a problem. We'll see going into this winter as that, some of that building stuff slows down, it'll allow me to get some of the stuff under my belt. We've already started moving down the road of doing an overwrite of chapter 20 of the planning code, and so we'll be bringing that hopefully before the end of the year. I know Steve and Nina are excited about that, so. So it's all good right now, so I appreciate the opportunity to do that, so. Thank you.
Thanks, Brent.
Congratulations, and thank you.
As far as where you're talking about streets and everything, where we did cut back on projects this year in anticipation of decreased revenues, and fortunately, we did not see that, does that mean that we're doing that much, gonna be able to doing that much more next year?
Yeah, I think the plan is, we've budgeted basically the same amount for next year that we had for this year. A lot of the issues with the streets we were gonna do this year that we couldn't was because the contractor wasn't able to come into town and do some of that work. They actually, his crew got COVID, and we were gonna try a new product, and they weren't able to get into Fort Morgan. Or we would have done probably the same amount of street improvements that we've been doing approximately five miles. We just were unable to do some of those sections because of that, that crew not able to get into town. But I do believe the dollars are budgeted roughly the same.
We still, too, we still have the two capital projects that we did not follow through with.
Right.
One of them is the extension of Beaver out of the industrial park.
Yeah.
And I would really still like to see that, and if our business comes along that's still wanting to buy out there, we're gonna have to extend that road anyway. So we'll probably have a discussion about rolling over funds from one budget year to the other when that comes up. And then the other one is kind of a conceptual, do we spend money on some streets that haven't been put in for years, and those are still out there, but those will come back to council before anything's decided on those. But all of the main strictly for streets were done and performed and paved, so.
Anybody else? Okay, I think that's it for me.
Your Honor, if you wouldn't mind coming over here and reading the oath off of my screen to swear in.
I can do that.
Mr. Kaper. I don't have a printer here, so, but I've prepared it with his name in it, and if you, Mr. Kaper, if you want to come down.
Nelson, if you'd follow me over here, please? Raise your right hand and repeat after me. I state your name. Do solemnly swear or affirm that I will support the Constitution. Support the Constitution. The laws of the United States. And of the state of Colorado. The charter and ordinances. Of the city of Fort Morgan. And that I will faithfully perform all duties pertaining to the office.
Stuff happening.
The office of Councilman Ward Two.
Kind of nice to have this again instead of being right there and seeing from, probably just about from when the...
Now he's at an executive session. Now he's got an executive session.
Thank you.
And once again, thank you, Andrew, for your willingness to participate and...
Did we lose one already? He thought you said it during...
He saw the two.
He said, "I'm during..."
Yeah.
Their executive session, their popular item.
Okay. Bids, meetings, and announcements. Mr. Brennan?
Thank you, Your Honor. The city has a few bids out. We're accepting sealed bids for concrete and asphalt crushing until 3:00 PM on October 14th. Sealed bids for animal shelter services until 3:00 PM on October 28th. Sealed bids for a marked police patrol vehicle replacement until 3:00 PM on October 28th. And sealed bids for upfitting one police patrol vehicle until 3:00 PM on October 28th. Under meetings, the city council will have a special meeting tomorrow at 5:00 PM at the Gene Doty Senior Center. That's a one-item agenda that's an executive session. On October 8th, the Historic Preservation Board is scheduled to meet at 4:00 PM here at City Hall. Then next week, on the 13th, the city council will have a budget review retreat at, also at the Gene Doty Senior Center at 5:00 PM. Then the library advisory board is scheduled to meet the 19th at 4:30 PM, and the next city council regular meeting will be October 20th at 6:00 PM here at City Hall. And again, I apologize for not having that oath ready, and I'm glad we were able to pull it together.
Okay. And we can get Mr. Kaper his iPad or...
Yeah.
Yeah, we'll work on all of the items for, yeah, we'll get started on that. Okay. Next item on the agenda is an executive session for the purpose of determining positions relative to matters that may be subject to negotiations, developing strategies for negotiations, and/or instructing negotiators under CRS Section 24-6-402-4E, and the following additional details are provided for identification purposes. Real estate contract request. I would entertain a motion to go into executive session.
So move.
I have a motion by Kevin Lindell and a second by Clint Anderson. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Same sign. We will adjourn to executive session for the stated purpose.